All this order, our meeting to order, would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection A of the Nebraska statutes. Statute's notice is hereby given that a copy of the Opens Meeting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Before we have roll call, I'd just like to welcome all of our guests this evening. Nice to see a good attendance at our meeting. Could we have roll call, please?
George Klein?
Here.
Shane Shepherd?
Here.
Mark Graves?
Here.
Kevin Alexi?
Here.
Clay Anderson, absent.
Could we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Mark, second by Shane, to approve the agenda. Any questions about the agenda? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
You have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin, to approve the consent agenda. It includes minutes for the special council meeting and regular city council meeting held November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. They're included in, for the boards and commissions, there's minutes from the citizen advisory review committee, uh, community development meeting held November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Attached there, and also the minutes from the PRT, problem resolution team meeting held October twenty-second. Special designated licenses that were administratively approved include Wild's Bar and Grill, post-prom New Year's Eve dinner and dance fundraiser at the Shatteran Arts Center on December thirty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Wild's Bar and Grill for the Ag banquet, which will be at the Dawes County Fairgrounds on January seventeen, twenty twenty-six. And Wild's Bar and Grill for the Keep Shatteran Beautiful Green Gala fundraiser at the Shatteran Arts Center on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that seems to be all. Any questions about any of those items? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, introduction of new community service officer?
This is a joint position between planning and zoning and the police department.
Chief report.
So we're gonna ask Mike Trueblood to come up, please? Mike's our new community service officer. That position was in this year's budget. He just started a little, maybe a month ago? And he's already been on the job finding areas of concern. The type of complaints that he will be looking at are vegetation complaints, weeds, trees, shrubs, overgrown alleys, sidewalks, um, snow. We started with snow. We talked about snow today. Um, there are a couple other things he's gonna be helping with, and he's helping out my department and Rick's department. So that's why it's a joint position between the two departments. But Mike, if you'll come and introduce yourself, give them a little background.
Uh, I'm Mike Trueblood. I know most everybody. I've lived here since, oh, nineteen ninety. Moved here to go to college. Uh, worked at the radio station for twenty-two years, Walmart for fourteen, and most recently Platt Valley Bank. Four kids that are all grown. They all live here, and three grandkids, so, uh, hopefully I can make a difference. That's kinda why I accepted this position, so, really, that's about it. There's not much. Like I said, I know most everybody here anyway, so.
Good, good to have you in there, and I, I don't know if the city manager will allow me, but I'll, I'm gonna get, have a direct line to you about weeds and the sidewalks. Next summer, I, I could hardly wait.
I'll watch.
Now, if you don't wanna get those messages, you can get ahead of me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, um, need to recognize the City of Shatteran Water and Wastewater Departments for the Scott Wilber Award Outstanding Facility, Gold Safety Award, and Silver Safety Award. Who does the presentation of that?
We got Tori here.
Tori?
Yep, Water Superintendent.
Uh, Tori Zoufer, fifteen ninety South Maple. Um, we apply for awards every year for different stuff. Um, we have three that we received this year. Um, it's kind of a hit or miss when we get them, but, uh, uh, Nicole Forney also helps me put in for all those. She does a lot of the legwork on that stuff. Um, so I appreciate that with her. Um, but a lot of these awards also show that the guys are, are doing what they're needing to be doing, to keep things up and, and do their jobs, so, um, we've got my entire crew here now, so. Um, the one, the Scott Wilber is on the wastewater side for the facility, and the other two are water-related. Um, I believe the one with the, that you'll see later here is with the frame, was, we were the only ones to apply for that this year, is what I got told, but, um, and then the other ones, the Scott Wilber alone, there was like three or four different facilities that applied for that this year that I know of, and, uh, we managed to get the gold award on that one, so. I don't have a whole lot else unless you guys have any other questions I can try and answer.
I'm gonna add some things. I know Tori made it sound like they were the only ones that applied for it. That's because the other communities didn't think that they would be even come close to being recognized for some of these things. Some of them are based off of injuries who called in. Some of it's based on the appearances of what they do, 'cause they do have people come out here, do a physical inspection, or they'll do a video of doing the same thing. So it's, it's not just, you know, just because of whatever things. I mean, they, they put a lot of efforts into it. That Tori and his crew should be commended for what they're able to do and completely get done for what they have, so.
Thank you for doing that, and do we have some plaques that we wanna present?
Well, just, you guys can do whatever you want.
Okay.
And maybe you guys could-
We gotta get a photo opportunity. Anybody got it on there?
Vice American.
Be at the end, be a bookmark. Come on.
Be a bookmark.
Be a book.
Thank you, guys. Job well done, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda is to recognize the City of Shatteran for receiving the Shatteran Urban and Community Forestry Project Grant. I think that's Scott's room. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Scott Schremer, Parks, Cemetery and Airport Superintendent. I have also Bryce Gerlock with me. He's one of our tree board members, and he works down at the NRD, and he's gonna be helping us facilitate this grant. Uh, just a little bit about it. It is through the Nebraska statewide arboretum, but it's a federal grant. So we were, uh, given a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, five, or a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And we are going to be doing tree removal, tree replacement, tree trimming, uh, training, and some equipment, and then a little bit of administrative cost goes through that stuff, too, so. Uh, some examples, you know, we have, Bryce and I went out with Luke and Lucinda, a couple of the tree board members last year, before we even started working on this thing, went and then did some, um, assessments on trees. And this is a, uh, basically a census, uh, type of a grant. So only part of our community i- i- is even eligible for it. It's kinda weird 'cause the way they sent, the census blocks work here, it's, uh, they call it a dysfunctional community for this, a- and it's just because of the trees. I mean, it's, it's weird because like Crawford and Harrison, both of their communities are eligible for it, but Hay Springs and Rushville are not. Gordon is, uh, the next town, uh, part of Valentine. A- a- it's just broke up around the state on just different spots. It's really weird, 'cause like all of Scotts Bluff except like an eight-block radius in the center of it qualifies, so it's kinda weird. The one thing they did give us a little lenience on was that we get to use, it's basically from Third Street to the north, but we get to use Finnegan Park and Memorial Park because of the schools. They, they won't allow Wilson Park, but they allowed those two parks at least, that we get to, get to do some of the stuff in. Uh, concentrating a lot of the trimming there, so we don't have to do that. The tools, uh, that are in this grant are gonna go to the Parks Department. So we'll get less costs. It's about four thousand dollars of the equipment we get out of this. So a couple new saws, a couple new pruning materials, and, like I said, having Bryce and, and Luke, having tree, tree guys at the NRD, you know, and they're mostly fire guys now, but, but, uh, it wa- we had it all put in place, so we were eligible for it. And when our, our forester in Scotts Bluff, Chrissy Land, she asked if we wanted to do it, and we went and talked to the NRD to back it, so, 'cause we didn't really have the staff to do the administrative side of it. So Pat O'Brien graciously took it upon himself to help, and we met with Chrissy's replacement, 'cause she's out on maternity leave right now. She's going back till February, so our grant process is not gonna start until February. But I think this is a good thing for the community. Get a lot of, a lot of the old dead and dying trees that have been, even some of them from the eighty-seven hailstorm that are still there, so it's a good way to clean some of them up. It will just be in the front yards and right-ofways. It won't be street trees, so that'll be the ones we're taking care of.
Yeah, any comments, many, a good deal?
So, on the parkways, for, for, uh, residents of Shatteran, if, uh, Pat was telling me a story of how the, the neighbor to, uh, NRD didn't want their tree taken down. Uh, is that something that's mandatory if they, if they decide they don't want their tree trimmed or taken down?
We contact, you know, we contacted the property owners, and we'll, we'll get the permission to take them if we don't. If they don't, that's their responsibility. Uh, they just need to realize that this is an opportunity to get a, a dead tree out of their front yard and a new tree planted. Uh, for everyone we take out, we have to put one back in, is the process. And we can plant more trees than we take out, so that's not an issue, so we can go above and beyond that. Uh, but we will respect property owners that don't want them removed, but we try to explain to them that that is their consequences. I mean, this is an opportunity to get it done for nothing, get it cleaned out and a new one put in. And if they wanna take that burden on themselves, they can, but, yeah. It's, it is one of those things where we did have somebody that we actually contacted already, said, no, you're not taking that out, and, okay. If the tree falls on a vehicle or into a house, it's their dollar, not ours. So that's, that's one of the benefits of this, is getting it done for, for nothing. I mean, this is a huge deal for some of those, 'cause especially some of them are on rental properties where, you know, landlords wanna get them out of there and, and no cost to them, so it's a good thing.
So is it tr- true that a lot of the trees that you guys looked at are kinda in the school districts to keep?
No, actually, we have three up by, uh, the schools, the city schools. Uh, the college wasn't in on this one. We didn't have that. We, we might be eligible to do this again. This is only a one-year grant, so we have to have this all done by next February. So we're gonna, we're gonna hit it, 'cause we hit it hard anyway. We're already starting to do this. The NRD will hire the contractors for the removals. Uh, any of the pruning that'll be done, it'll be done, has to have myself, our licensed arborist there, to verify it. And then we will have, uh, until Chrissy gets back, we have Kayden, um, it's her assistant, and Scotts Bluff will come up and verify most of the work when we're done. I'll just have to sign off on it. But so when they're pruning, I'll go make sure that we have qualified people pruning, because we used our own, basically our own, uh, literature that we have in our city codes for hiring an arborist to do our work. So that's what they're gonna do. Planning them, they don't need an arborist, but when we're doing the, the, the removals and the trimming, they'll need to be a licensed arborist, so. Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the, it's a one-for-one replacement, so every tree that comes down will have to be replaced as well. And so this grant also replaces those trees. Um, and these are, they have some, uh, requirements for the trees that go back in, but they're gonna be really nice trees. Um, you know, good roots, good size. They're not like just little bare root trees going in. These are like two, three hundred dollar trees. Um, and it's a hundred percent, uh, paid for, so there's like no money in the land, on earth, the city, or anything.
And this will be going on our tree plotter, the program that we did with our tree inventory that we did a few years ago. It's all beyond the program that we can go and look up all the information. You can see it all. You can see exactly where every one of them went. Uh, you'll see everything that's trimmed. You'll see everything that's planted, and you'll see everything that's removed. So we'll have to give them a species list. Pat and I are working on a species list that they have to approve, which we'll go with pretty four or five native trees that do really good here, because we are kinda responsible for them. Uh, there's a, a ten-year watch on them. They're warranted for the first year, but we, we wanna make sure they make it. So we have to go and, and I have to be there when they, when they plant them, so they plant them properly. Or Bryce, or Luke, one of, will have to be there when, when they get planted, so that they're done properly, so, because we are responsible for them for a year. And then we wanna, they want a ten-year review on them, so that's one of the things that is nice about the tree plotter, 'cause it's all right there, then you can go right back and just look it up, so. Anything else?
So where you say in your note twenty-five to thirty trees, sickly or poor condition, mo- most of that is on private property?
Twenty, it, it all is, or city pro-
All of it?
Yeah, or city property, or city school property.
That's, that's a big benefit, too.
Yes, yes. But it all, it all, it's front, front property, too, it's, you know, it's on right-ofway, so.
Right.
But, yeah, it's, it's a huge deal. This is, this is, you know, we, we, we didn't go too big. I mean, we went pretty big. I mean, this is a huge grant. But in a year's time, we don't have a lot of licensed arbor- I mean, we have the, the Groves, Logan and Kenny that work around here. But other than that, we don't really have a whole lot of licensed arborists up in this part of the country, so there's a lot of work to be done. And getting them planted back is gonna be just as bad, so, but this is, this is a good deal.
S- s- so is my black walnut in front of my office on the list?
You're on the wrong side of Third Street. Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, yeah. Well, I have mixed feelings about it. It's, it's nice shade, but man, it's a-
Dirty.
Well, it's only a dirty part of the year, and then, of course, and then we have to vaccinate it so we don't get aphids.
Yep.
Which, we used to spray for that, and then Bob Mullen figured out he could vaccinate for-
Yep. We have him over by the community garden. He d- he does ours, too, so.
I thought he was crazy when he said, I'm gonna inject stuff in there. Seems to work.
Yeah, it does.
I think that's a nice, oh, I think it's a wonderful grant to go in conjunction with our, uh, sidewalk, um, thing that we do. This is another thing that, uh, will help, help the community, so.
Yeah.
And it's great to have the extra partnership that we're getting with the NRD and-
NRD, couldn't do it without them, so.
Exactly.
And the tree board's been a great help.
Tree board has been great, and that, that's just good to get those ties going strong, so we can continue to find these things.
And we did, did communicate with Shatteran State College, and they were just kinda a little, they got there a little late. I, I, partially my fault, 'cause we didn't really wanna branch out that big, but I did tell them that if we do this again, we'll definitely include them. If we can apply again and try to get some more done, we will.
I think there's gonna be three more years of this grant, if I remember right, and so we just did the first year.
Awesome.
But we're gonna try again. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. Okay, well, all of us know that Deb Cotier is retiring from the NNDC Northwest Nebraska Development Corporation, and she is the representative to the Panhandle Area Development District, otherwise known as PAD. And her replacement at NNDC is John Reed, so we're, need to replace Deb as a representative to the PAD. If someone wants to make that motion.
I'll move to, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve, to, uh, what was his name?
Appoint. John Reed.
As the new, um-
Representative.
Panhandle Area Development District.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin.
Was, was he amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just thought I'd ask.
Uh, move to appoint John Reed as to the Panhandle Area Development District. Do we have roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, item F on the agenda. Someone care to introduce that?
I'll move to introduce resolution twenty-two-five-dash-one-zero-five, move for its re- or move for its approval.
Second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark, for resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-one-zero-five, which is to recommend award, or the bid for the purchase of one new twenty-two-five, or newer half-ton crew cab, four-by-four pickup for the streets department.
Good evening, Council. Dustin Glass, Street Superintendent, ten thirteen East Niagara. Uh, we received three bids total from Walstrom, one from Walstrom, one from GMC of Shatteran, and one from Eagle, Eagle Chevrolet. And they were actually very close between the three of them. Walstrom Ford was forty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars with an additional two hundred and fifty dollars for the running boards. Um, GMC of Shatteran was forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and Eagle Chevrolet was forty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five. And I would like to recommend the award, a bid to Walstrom Ford for having the lowest bid, uh, forty-seven thousand, two hundred.
Anyone have any questions? I, I noticed that there's, the drivetrain warranty is sixty thou- five years, sixty thousand miles.
Yeah.
Was there a time when the manufacturers were giving commercial a hundred thousand miles?
Yeah.
For, but they did away with that, or?
They used to. Now it's just the standard sixty thousand miles for drivetrain.
I was wondering if they were doing that when they were kinda trying out the, the smaller engines on, I mean, these are all, and I asked this at the, uh, agenda meeting, these are all vi- via- smaller engines on, I mean, these are all, and I asked this at the, uh, agenda meeting, these are all V- V eights.
Yeah, the W- F-one-fifty from Walstrom's is a five-point-oh, GMC and Eagle are both five-point-threes.
Anyone have any other questions?
Well, it also states that, uh, if Walstrom Ford can't fulfill that, that the next lowest bid
Yep, wouldn't receive the bid, yes.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, anyone wanna introduce?
I'll, I'll introduce resolution twenty-two-five-dash-one-zero-six and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark, which is a resolution to declare property a surplus and authorize the same to be sold or discarded. Um, it's fairly short list. Um, of course, probably the biggest item is the, the first item, which is a two thousand and three Ford F-four-fifty ambulance, um, and there's another vehicle, some comput- computer set and seventy-two-inch diesel X-Mark mower. And a John Deere Gator and a Polaris Ranger. Misland, a little couple other little things. So what do you, however they sell the ambulance, cause that's I think is a good working ambulance, right, for some, somebody, or not?
Yeah, Brandon Martin, Shadrin's fire chief. Um, so, yeah, we did get the new one in, and now our next step is to work on getting this one sold and move forward. Um, we have spoke with a couple different departments that have showed interest in it. Um, right now, it looks like Rapid City is looking to purchase this. So our step for us is just to get this listed with your approval, kinda things that we can move forward. That was originally purchased through our in-house, um, donations and mailers kinda thing. Um, and then we moved it through our governing body, which is the city of Shadrin, and so it'll all go back into Fund Twenty-Eight as far as, um, going back after that. But it is a good working ambulance, the same reason, though, we're trying to get rid of, or trying to get a new one, it's also gonna be a harder sell. I mean, we just purchased this one for three forty, you know, it's gonna be probably worth twenty-five, thirty-five, it's hard to say, somewhere in there. But that, you know, you look at the life of those ambulances, it may only have twenty-five thousand, but there's off, awful lot of idle time sitting there in some rough environments, things like that, so. Um, it's done, it's good, and it's time to kinda update and get some better technology.
And the, within the city, Tom, this isn't necessarily in, uh, we're, we're not gonna have an auction, or?
No, we're, we're not, Brandon asked to have this surplus list, and we had a few other things that we had accumulated at the time, so the auction, um, to try to get rid of the, the ambulance is best done through the fire department. But we put these other items there, because there's every once in a while, um, auction, uh, companies will say, hey, we've got room for a little bit more, and we'll have that list available for them to do that.
So it's an online auction versus a?
Yeah, so what, we've done that with those in the past, and they've been very, very successful. And I, I plan on continuing with those online auctions. We get a lot more viewerships for them than we did when they were in person.
Anyone have any other questions? Not, could we have a roll call, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is, um, to motion to approve the city council meeting dates for the calendar year twenty-twenty-six, um, there's a list of theirs in there, and they're all on the first and third Mondays, except for uh, the day after Labor Day, which is September eighth, which is a Tuesday. Um, and I looked at that, and I thought, wow. And then I looked at the calendar, and I said, okay, this is as late as Labor Day can be, I, I think. On the phone on the seven, if I interpreted that right. Anyone have any questions about those dates? Hey, could we have roll call, please? I'm moving in your motion.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin and seconded by
I'll second that.
Seconded by Shane. Do we have roll call, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the claim as presented, um.
Second that.
Have any questions about any of the claims? Um, Shane noted that, you know, we're, he asked me about the stormwater bond payment, and I told him I believe we just pay the principal once a year and the interest twice a year. And we also have a payment for the sewer plant, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, bond payment to ND. And I'm sure everybody is waiting for my comment about the Wex Bank, we got hit with a eight-hundred-and-sixty-five-dollar-and-forty-one cents finance charge. If we, how would, what do we do wrong?
What we did wrong with that is we sent the check in the mail to the corporation, and they did not get it in time. Is what happened. We are trying to get it corrected by doing the ACH now. Initially, that was not approved, and now it is.
Anyone have any other questions?
I just had one question about the Open Arts Center rent, was that part of the, the, uh, tourism grant that's just kind of passing through? Creative district grant, yeah, sorry, misrepresented that.
It's gonna come up every month for the next year? I think we're a couple months into it already, if I recall correctly. Okay, um, we have, somebody seconded my motion, yeah, okay. Do we have a roll call, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Uh, like them introduce resolution twenty-two-five-dash-one-zero-seven to excuse council member Clay Anderson from this meeting, he sent me a text this afternoon that he came down with some kinda bug, so.
I'll second that.
And I said I didn't want it. And seconded by
Mark.
Mark. Could we have a roll call, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, public comment period, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda may now do so. Individuals are allowed a total of three minutes to speak.
Hello, everyone, Cheryl Welch, re- recently retired high school teacher. Uh, I'm, I'm here today because I was, I'm representing a group of people and families who are concerned about the Shadrad article that was posted on the twenty-sixth of November, uh, regarding the, um, city transit, stopping transportation for kids. Um, what the article, so we saw that it wasn't on the agenda, and, um, Tom, are you gonna be speaking about that at all? Okay, I guess what I would like to say is, when I was in the high school, there were kids that were picked up every afternoon, usually middle school students would come running in to pick up those, let the high schoolers know the bus was there. What I know, the article said that they've had about seventeen kids, and that it was described as a great program that has been utilized by a lot of families for the last two years. I understand that Julie said because of increase in ridership, that wasn't, um, explained, but I think maybe in other times of the day, uh, and shortage of staff. I'm really concerned about those kids who have been catching rides with the, via the bus. We've worked a long time in this city to try and figure out how to best support families to get their kids to school. And to stop the program potentially in the beginning of January, as Principal Libby Mack said, is very unfortunate timing. And I hope that, um, as Julie said, they will reevaluate if they can find another driver. Apparently, there's someone le- um, leaving a position. But I really hope that we find the means in which to support this service, because it is a great opportunity for us to help the ed- foster the education of kids in our community and get those kids to school, who otherwise might not have a way to get there, or walk. Which in the win- winter, and with the lack of some of the sidewalks that we know we have, is not a, anything we wanna see happen. So, thank you very much, um, I'm here in support of retaining that, uh, bus service for students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
May I respond to that, Mayor?
Um, certainly.
Okay, the one thing is, is the article is not correct. Transportation will be still allowed for the students. It just will not be, be prior to eight o'clock.
Right, and school starts at eight.
And the reason, yes, and I know school starts at eight, but the reason being is we would start picking up kids as early as six forty-five in the morning, that means our drivers have to be there by six fifteen. And those hours that are being taken out, um, are not necessarily available then for the rest of the day. When you start losing certain people or whatever, we did talk to the administration, and we told them that this is gonna be an issue, that the students are still allowed to dri- or ride the buses, both pickup and delivery, so that is not true in the, the article itself, and I, I think that
They did say that if stu- if parents call by seven AM to schedule the pickup at eight, that that's a possibility.
And here again, that's one of the things that we're, we're trying to get all worked out, so that we can try to help getting some of the kids there. But we can't guarantee that what we've been, been doing in the past, just because of, like I said, the staffing of, of what we have here. Now, as far as the, the ridership, um, it's one of those, it's a tough decision. Um, we have people that have medical appointments. We have people that have other appointments that are just as important as kids getting to the schools. And it's unfortunate that we had to cut down the hours, we're not saying they can't ride, we're just saying we're not gonna provide that early in the mornings. And so that's one of the biggest issues that we have to, to concern, or consain, contain with what we're trying to do here. And it was a very difficult decision, cause Julie was the one that was the biggest supporter for it. She loves having, the drivers love to have those kids on there and everything else. But it's one of those things that we cannot dedicate a driver and a vehicle to that for those times of hours every day during school time.
So then, just a question, um, if there is a new driver hired, is the program finished as far as getting to kids, getting kids to school on time?
Once we get back up to staffing on what we're needing to do, we'll reevaluate at that time. But it takes time to train new people to do some of these things too. And as you well know, not everybody can drive for kids. Or teach kids or anything else, you have to have that special person that's gonna be willing to do those things. So it is difficult to find in our community a, a person that's willing to do it. Our current person that does it, does a great job, great job. But it's one of those things that we have to make the decision, we're still offering the drives, it's just gonna be later for them. And talking to the administrators, and I know talking to several of them, um, we asked, you know, we know that this is gonna cause some headaches, and this, we still want the kids to come, even if it's an hour and a half late, two hours late. It's better than not having them there at all. And so that's one of the issues that we had to deal with.
How many drivers do we have, and how much to, how many hours per week do they work?
We have, I believe, right now, three drivers, and they work approximately twenty hours a, a week.
Mm-hmm.
For that driving, and then we have one supervisor as well.
Mm-hmm, and the service is from eight AM to three forty-five, is that correct?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks for that clarification, I appreciate it. Would, uh, just like to reiterate, if we can keep this service for kids, getting to school two hours late is a bad deal. I know getting them to school, we want them in school, obviously, but, uh, if you can make that work, yeah, it would be better for our community.
I do know that the school has a, a person that's been hired as well to do that too. And so that is another source out there.
I think you're referring to the social worker, perhaps?
And that person has been a, been notified and kept in the loop of everything that was going on. And so we are trying to make every effort to do whatever we can do, but there is only so many things that we can do. And unfortunately, this is a service that we have to cut back until we can get better staffing for what we're doing.
Okey-dokey, thank you.
Thanks again. Anyone else? Not, um, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, um, couple things, I just wanted to say thanks to the NRD and Pat O'Brien and his crews for helping out with the, the tree grant. Uh, it's a huge service, I hope everybody that's offered that is able to and willing to take advantage of it, and so we can maybe get some extra ones down the road. Uh, the second thing is, is I appreciate the MPPD and all of those that actually started putting up all the Christmas decorations and stuff, that's a huge task. Um, we had the street shop, we had parks, we had everybody. Yeah, Mark, yeah? Cable company was over there too, as far as doing all of those things that we're doing, and, and it just makes the community feel Christmas this time of year. And then with that being said, Mother Nature provided us with a snowstorm that was a little bit more than what was anticipated and expected. Um, you know, everybody that was looking at what the weather forecasts were, um, we didn't anticipate the severe cold that we got behind this. Um, there was times where they were saying trace amounts of snowfall was gonna happen, we didn't get quite that, we got quite a bit more. Um, and so with that being said, uh, when you go from a forty, forty-five day degree day into a negative windshield factor of, I heard, as high as sixteen below the next day, um, it's tough for the guys to be able to get out there and get everything cleared off. So unfortunately, ice is gonna build up, and the guys are working diligently, trying to keep everything done, and I thought they did a really good job. We had guys out on Saturday morning as early as one o'clock in the morning. Um, they, uh, cannot make the entire town with our only three drivers that we had at that time, trying to get everything done. Um, and so I appreciate the public in the fact that they need to have some of those things uh, cleared off, and they're, they got safety concerns. But I also appreciate our guys willing to go in as early as they did uh, to do everything they could to keep the streets as safe as possible. Now, for the next several days, there's gonna be more sanding, we got snow pickup tomorrow morning. Um, and do some technical difficulties, red, or the code red was not functionally being able to use, so we're gonna use Shadrad to help us out, and we're hoping to use this council meeting to let everybody know, we're gonna be picking up all the roads uh, tomorrow morning with the snow blowers. Uh, they're gonna start at four o'clock in the morning, and hopefully have most of it done, I, I think they'll have it done by eight o'clock, unless we have a breakdown of some sort. But, um, I, I just, uh, snow removal is one of those things that you hope to do everything. I'm not driving a truck, so I think Dustin's gonna be all right, I won't break anything for him. But, um, it's one of those things that it's, it's something that, uh, people have to got to understand, we've got some new drivers, we're training new people. Um, but if you have concerns or comments about any of the streets, please give me a call down here at City Hall, four-three-two-zero-five-zero-five, and I'll try to address any kinda questions that you have. We had a few things that, uh, could've been done maybe a little bit better, but for the most part, I think the guys did a really ni- really nice job throughout the entire community. Uh, the last thing I wanted to bring forth is something that, uh, maybe the public should be aware of on some of it, December fifth.
December fifth, from two thirty to four thirty at the Shatteron Public Library is the Christmas Party. And Rosella provided me an article, and I think I forwarded everything to the council members. But there will be live music, food, drinks, bake sale, crafts, and Mr. Nick will show up. So, and that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom.
Tom, when you mentioned drivers, are, so there are additional drivers being trained for snow removal, or?
We have new personnel in that department that's learning some new responsibilities. And that's one of the things that we still have to work with, that, work with them to determine, make sure that they're going to proper speeds. One of the things, too, that I know Dustin's wholeheartedly behind this, if the sidewalks and the driveways are scooped out already, you know, we get citizens up there early enough, we don't want to block them in again, and sometimes we get, so we, we just need to do better on some of those kind of things. And unfortunately, it does happen. Sometimes we don't have any other place to go with it, too. And so I, I'm hoping that the public understands when we do snow removal, it's not because we don't like you and we're going to move the snow there. But it's one of those things, it's tough to move the snow out of the streets so people can drive decent without putting it someplace. But they do everything in their power, and that's what they need to do, is continue working at doing that. And, and it just takes time and experience. You know, several years back, I, I was told, you know, many years ago, they were able to do all of this, and everybody was happy and everything else. I never heard of a happy snow removal time. There was always somebody that had some issues. And, like I said, these guys are going out at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning to go out and take care of it. It's not only just the streets, it's all the airport guys are doing it so that we can continue getting our E A S. services into town. So it's, it's one of those things that it's, takes a lot of people to get a lot of stuff, and, and when you consider how big our crews are. We don't hire any seasonal help to do this. We grab people from other departments. Water, our utilities department provides extra personnel, but our utility department's three right now. We don't have a full group of them. So it's one of those things that, yes, we are still training and trying to get everybody experienced on some of these things, and we just need time. And so I'm asking the public to give us some patience while we're working through all of these learning curves.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council closing comments. I've been voting first, so I get the pleasure of going ahead. I have a nice summary given to me by my executive secretary, otherwise known as Emily. But I'd like to thank you, Cable Company, or the Great Plains, doing the Christmas lights, and I don't know if anyone else was involved. Reiterate, shopping local. This Thursday, we have tree lighting at the gathering space. A first flush for the new restrooms. Pray delights, Festival of Trees at the courthouse, and the holiday concert at Shatteron State College at seven P M. And Chris Kringle Boutique, Holiday Gifts, decent on Saturday at the fairgrounds, nine to four, so. I think that pretty well takes care of everything.
You, I think you said about everything that was on my list, too, George. I'd also like to thank Emily Klein for decorating the chambers this year again. And I'd like to thank Mark, who works for the cable company, and their task that they did on Third Street and Main, putting up the holiday lights and, and M P P D.'s job for putting up the star over the, the bank downtown area.
Well, winter is definitely here now, so just a reminder to everyone, give yourself a little extra time to defrost your windows and, and drive a little slower, because sometimes streets can be a little slick, so just be careful.
Well, just kind of on the, the back of what we've talked about a little bit tonight. I grew up not in Shatteron, I grew up in, in areas that had busing to school, and that frequently was how I got to school. So I am a little disappointed that, that this is, I understand, this is what, you know, we have to do within our budgets and within our staffing. But I, I really hope that we can work, and I, I intend to, to keep an eye on it, to help get kids to school on time. I, I spoke to one of the drivers today that primarily takes kids to school, and, and he said that he would prefer to keep doing that, you know, he thinks it's the right thing to do, but he's got to work within the parameters of the job. I would just like to say, I, I think that's a great job for a retiree or someone with a little extra time. Somebody in our community, perhaps you're watching right now, you know, might be the person that could help bolster the ranks of the bus drivers and allow us to, to maybe be a little bit more flexible like we had been. If, if we don't have the people, like, like Tom said, you know, if you don't have the driver there, you're kind of stuck with what we can offer. But I understand that, you know, ninety percent of that ridership i- is not schoolchildren, and people do depend on it to get groceries and medical appointments and other things, so we are trying to serve the broadest, you know, slice of, of Shatteron citizens that we can. But get, getting to school on the bus is important, too, so that's all I got.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane. Could we have roll call, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
I'd like to note that it's at six fifty P M.
I ripped that sleeve on a nail in my father-in-law's garage.
You did?
Okay, the hour being seven thirty-five, make a motion, we come back in general session.
I'll second. I make a?
Motion by me, seconded by Kevin. Come back in general session. Could we have roll call, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Tell me, who made the motion, who seconded?
Mark and Shane.
Shane motion.
Shane and Mark.
Okay. Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.